Meeting to order, and I would like to ask Mr. Luckett to take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. We are here this afternoon to present the FY 2022 mid-year budget amendment. And before I get started with the presentation, I did just want to point out the items that are included in your agenda packet. We have the sheet, that's the summary sheet, it kind of gives you a listing of all the mid-year recommendations that we are providing. It gives you an update on, you know, what is needed in FY 2022 and what's recurring, what's not recurring. And it provides that information by fund. And then the second sheet that we've provided provides a brief description of each request that is included in the mid-year budget amendment, along with a notation about whether it's an increase or decrease in expenditures or revenues, along with whether it's a one-time or recurring expense. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that you have that in your packet. So we will go ahead and get started. And in terms of an agenda for this work session, we're going to begin by just giving you some brief background on kind of where we've been and where we're at today, as well as the process that we've gone through in compiling these recommendations for you all. We're also going to be providing a summary of the recommendations by fund. And this particular year, this really just touches on the general fund, the capital projects fund, the debt service fund. And the department heads are here, and they'll be actually presenting their individual requests to you all. And then we'll wrap things up by talking about next steps in this process. So to begin with some background, I wanted to start with some background because there have been a lot of various funding processes that have been going on simultaneously this year, and it makes for some confusing situations. So I thought I'd start with that, just to make sure we're all on the same page and to kind of provide some context. So to start, as you know, earlier in F, sorry, in earlier in calendar year 2021, we went through our annual budget process. That all, that was presented to you all in April 2021, and subsequently was approved by mayor and council. The FY 2022 budget was approved on May 24th, 2021. At the same time, back in March, the president signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act, which provided allotments to cities and counties and states across the country. That was passed and signed into law in early March. Detailed guidance was provided on how the funds could be spent and how much money we were actually going to receive in early May. At the time, once the city learned more information about the ARPA guidelines, staff went about developing recommendations for how to spend the ARPA funds. And so those recommendations were presented to you all on August 23rd of 2021. And at the time, we received direction from mayor and council to go back and obtain some community feedback and trying to assess the needs that existed within the community and to come back to you with that information. And that is an ongoing process. At the same time, mayor and council has also requested staff to provide immediate needs. And that was on October 12th, as well as the council meeting for this evening. And so, count staff has worked on that and provided some information regarding the immediate needs that you all have requested. And then to add another layer of complication on it all, staff also began working on the mid-year budget amendment in late September. So there's a lot of requests out there, a lot of funding processes. And so I just wanted to kind of reiterate where we've been and why we're here today. And to try and, I guess, eliminate the confusion that exists. The leadership team met a couple of weeks ago to look at all of these recommendations that have been brought up as part of ARPA, as part of mid-year, as part of the immediate needs requests. And I can tell you, based on our recommendation, we are suggesting that the FY 2022 mid-year budget amendment include all of the funding needs for the remainder of the current fiscal year. And that's how we've structured our recommendation as part of the mid-year budget amendment. So there's some other requests that you've seen as part of ARPA, some other requests that you've heard about when we've talked about immediate needs. You're going to see everything that staff considers an immediate need funding that is needed for the rest of the fiscal year. You're going to see that as part of this presentation tonight for the mid-year budget amendment. I also, one of the things that's kind of made this possible in terms of us being able to wrap these things into the mid-year budget process is that our financial close for FY 21 is nearly complete. We've been going through that process for the last couple of months. It's not complete yet, but we're at a point where we're able to provide an estimate for the amount of fund balance that we have remaining from the prior year. So we're able to use some of those funds to help fund the recommendations that we have before you this evening. What does this mean for ARPA? That process will continue to go forward. We are working with community relations now. To, the webpage for ARPA is actually already on the city's website. So we have a webpage dedicated to ARPA that provides basic information about the eligibility guidelines. It includes links to the meetings where we've already discussed it in the past, as well as a note to tell people that we're going to be conducting public feedback in the coming weeks and to be on the lookout for that information. So that process will continue. But like I said, our, the leadership team of the city has recommended to you all as part of this mid-year budget amendment that any funding needs that remain, that we know of today, are included in this 22 budget amendment, mid-year amendment. Next, I wanted to kind of just go over really quickly the guidance that was provided to departments as part of the mid-year budget amendment process. First, as we talked through this, really, we wanted to make sure that any new operating budget spending would be contingent upon availability of new operating resources. And by that, we mean we want to make sure we're matching recurring expenditures with recurring resources. Secondly, at the time that we began the mid-year process, our financial data for FY 2022 was still very preliminary. As we began this process in late September, we had really only received one of our sales tax payments for FY 2022. So we're still kind of early in the fiscal year, we've just wrapped up the first quarter, and you'll hear more about that tomorrow at committee. But we want to be cognizant of the fact that we're still early in this process. Next, we also wanted to point out that as we think about mid-year budget, we also want to make sure that we're preparing now for what we know is coming in FY 2023 as part of that budget process. And that could be any cost increases that we know are coming today as part of that process, any budget needs. We know that the strategic plan that was approved by mayor and council will be moving into the implementation phase. And we want to make sure that we're considering all of those needs as we think about what we're doing today and preparing for next year's budget process. We've also recommended that we delay any new recurring operating quests, requests, if possible, until the FY 2023 budget process in order for any new recurring spending to be evaluated among all departmental needs. So we didn't want to get into a place where we were looking at just a couple of operating requests that got submitted today, where we get into the 23 budget process and realize, well, that was actually a higher priority than what we approved as part of mid-years. We want to, didn't want to make a decision in a vacuum, we wanted to be able to evaluate all requests at once as part of one process. And then finally, we wanted to, instead of using, instead of, instead of obligating a lot of operating funds for operating requests, our suggestion and recommendation would be to utilize the mid-year budget amendment process to fund one-time capital, one-time or capital budget needs through the use of available fund balance. So that kind of summarizes the overall guidance that we provided to departments as they started developing mid-year budget requests. So we'll move on to a summary by fund of the requests that you'll see as part of the mid-year. First, we'll talk about the general fund. And so what you see here at the top is kind of a reconciliation of available funding. So based on what we know today, we have an estimated FY 2022 current fund balance over reserve by policy of $4.5 million. We do expect that to be more than that, but we don't want to, we want to be a little conservative as we wrap, wrap up our year-end close process. And so we're putting that number at $4.5 million, that is a preliminary number. We're also recommending revenue adjustments that net out to an additional 1.1 million. So that, that together provides total available funds of $5,660,000. Of that $5.6 million, if we, thinking about the budget principles that we've adopted as a city, about 1.1 million of that is available for operating requests. In other words, that's $1.1 million of recurring resources available for recurring items. The table at the bottom of the slide gets into the recommendations that we're providing to you this evening. So you see these are negative numbers, that just means that we're, these are actually expenditures. And so we're recommending $389,000 of operating adjustments, $3.1 million of a transfer to our capital projects fund to fund some maintenance capital items. And then we are recommending that we set aside remaining funds of $2.1 million as a reserve for our FY 2023 budget process. So I wanted to spend just a minute to go through the general fund revenue adjustments that we're recommending this evening. Like I said, the total of the revenue adjustments net out to $1.1 million increase in our general fund revenues. First, I'll talk about sales tax revenue. Our sales tax is doing really well. We're bringing in about 16% higher than projections in our budget through the first quarter. It's about 22% higher than the prior year. And so the $1 million increase in sales tax revenue is really representative of just the first quarter of FY 2022. And our business tax revenue category, we're suggesting an increase of $425,000. This is primarily due to the insurance premium tax that came in higher than budgeted, somewhat offset by reduction in our cable TV franchise fees. Line three, the charges for service revenue. This is an increase of $90,000, and this is really recognizing the impact of the new agreements that the city has in place with Mountain Park. On, under property tax revenue, as you can see, we are anticipating, we're suggesting a decrease in our overall property tax revenue of $305,000. As we went through the millage rate adoption process, and we provided you with that information at the time, the amount of appeals actually came in higher than anticipated. That combined with exemptions that were slightly lower than anticipated has resulted in this recommendation that we're suggesting tonight, which is an overall decrease in property tax revenue of three hundred and five thousand dollars. Under licenses and permits revenue, our building permit and inspection fees are trending a little lower at this point in the year than we would have projected. And so we're recommending a decrease at this time of a hundred thousand dollars. So the total of all those adjustments, like I said, net out to an increase, overall increase of one point one million. The next slide provides a summary of our capital projects fund. And so the first half of the slide at the top shows you what makes up our available funding in our capital projects fund. So first, the transfer that I mentioned earlier from general fund of three point one million dollars. The next two items both deal with leases or financings that we have either have been previously approved or one that is recommended this evening. The public safety laptop replacement, you all approved that a few months ago. And really, this is just an accounting adjustment that we need approval on to recognize the revenues and the expenditures associated with that. That's seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, one eighty-nine. And then one of the requests that you'll hear about tonight is a fire engine replacement. And if that were to be approved, we would finance that purchase and that would, we would want to recognize the lease proceeds of seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Both of those lease proceeds, both of those requests, net out to a zero impact. We have a, both a revenue and expenditure for both of those. So total available funds in the capital projects fund is four point six million. And then you'll hear about capital requests, that total four point six million dollars as well. And then finally, the last fund that we wanted to highlight this evening was our debt service fund. As you might remember, you all approved a decrease in our millage rate a few months back. And right now, we are, the point of this recommendation is to recognize the decrease in revenue associated with that decrease in millage. The budget, when it was adopted, anticipated the full millage rate of four point nine five five. And so this is just right sizing that adjustment. So we have a current estimated fund balance in our debt service fund of two point three million dollars, nearly two point four. When we reduced the millage rates, that reduced our revenue by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you can see, we're actually using the fund balance like we talked about before for the debt service expenditure. So that leaves an estimated remaining fund balance in our debt service fund of one point five million dollars. So with that, we'll move on to the department requests. And each department head will come up and present their items. And we'll start with administration.
Thank you, Mr. Luckett. So from the administration department, we have one that is fairly familiar with the increase, fairly familiar with the increase in legal fees. Each year when we budget, we just budget an amount to start the year because we never really know what legal fees we're going to have throughout the year. We had a hundred thousand dollars. That money is pretty much gone at this point. It's been used up during the year. We have two fairly large parties that we're working with for the rest of this year. They're not new to you all. It's T-Mobile and the firefighter lawsuit that we've been working through. Firefighter lawsuit is really getting started now. It's going into the discovery phase. So it's going to, we're anticipating about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the remainder of this year. And then T-Mobile has started back up. Of course, you know, it went through a, a long period where there was a lot of activity. It went to the Supreme Court, Superior Court, Supreme Court. And now that it's back, it's getting started kicking up again. So we're anticipating about fifty thousand more possibly for this year. So we're looking for an increase in the legal fees of two hundred thousand dollars. And that, you know, we normally come through it to you at mid-year with whatever we think we might need for the rest of the year. So we knew it'd be something. We just weren't sure how much until now. So that's what that two hundred thousand is for. The next one is for finishing up some work that we have going on with the facilities condition assessment, actual projects that we're doing. We look to see what projects that were absolutely needed to be completed during this year and talk with the departments. And there's a couple of them. The fiscal activity center roof replacement, it reckoned parks comes in at one point one million as part of that one point six. We've done some repairs on that during the year, last year, even though we didn't have a lot of funding in FCA because of COVID and working through that. So we got it to where it was holding for now, but it needs to, it's time for the replacement. And so that's a one-time cost that would be good. We can finish that during this next, during this budget year if we can have that funding. The next thing that makes that up is the city hall elevator replacement. All of our elevators are at end of life in all of our buildings. So we're trying to get, make sure we have at least one in city hall out of the two that's going to be updated now because it's almost at an emergency point. The last repair we had on one of the elevators, and it was out for several weeks about a year ago, and the repairman at that time said that parts are almost impossible to get, that they've actually started going to eBay just to find parts for replacement. So we want to at least get one of them done right now. That's why we have that in at mid-year. It's a hundred thousand dollars. The next one is a river landing exterior painting. I know that doesn't sound like a big emergency. It is an FCA project in a future year. But the paint has got to the point to where it's starting to degrade some of the structure on the outside where the water is seeping in. So we have included that. It's a twenty-five thousand dollars, but we need to get that done as soon as we can. So we're not hurting the wood and the trim and other things without it being sealed to the outside. The last item is the city hall air handler replacements. That's in this building for our HVAC needs. We actually have an error in our request. The total project right now is funded at three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's about sixty-eight thousand dollars shy of what we needed, but that's what we had in the FCA. So we have some monies, about nineteen thousand remaining in FCA. So rather than three hundred and fifty thousand, which is what we were putting in, that was the actual original cost. We need fifty thousand dollars of that. So our one point six million dollar request is actually one point three million dollars, not one point six. So that would be for the fiscal activity center roof replacement, the rest of the city hall air handler replacement, one city hall elevator replacement, and then the river landing exterior painting. And that would make up the one point three request for maintenance. Is there any questions on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Michael, back to the city hall elevator replacement.
Yes, sir.
So we talked about the elevator, I guess, one or two years of budgets ago. And the question was, is it a safety issue or is it cosmetic issue? And back then, it was a cosmetic issue, so we didn't do anything with the elevator.
Yes.
So I see now the whole elevator have to be replaced. Now, is it a safety issue with the elevator?
Yes.
And what would be the cost of this replacing one unit?
So thank you for bringing that up because that is absolutely two different things. In our FCA program, we had elevators in there and it was strictly cosmetic. It was inside the cab, replacing all of the bars. They're, they're actually not ADA compliant anymore. But it was to replace the paneling in there and the bars and the lighting and all of that. And we didn't fund it at that time because it wasn't absolutely necessary. What was not in the FCA was the actual operating equipment of the elevators, the control panels, the pumps, all of the things that keep it running. So that is what is now at end of life. One of the things that we are absolutely going to do in the future is make sure that that is assessed when we assess the rest of, assess the rest of our buildings. The only thing FCA contemplated was the cosmetics. So each elevator is around a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in next year's, if I can make sure that we have one here that is, that is absolutely going to get us through, that's why I have one in here now, to go ahead and get it updated so that at least we have one always working. And, and they may not fail. I mean, we're hoping that, you know, we can nurse them on and continue. And even if one does have a problem, if the mechanic shows up and can get the part or can find a way to fix it, we'll do that. We'll keep them safe. But the idea is let's go ahead and get one right now out of the two that is going to be up to the new standards. But it will require new equipment because the old stuff is just outdated and past its life. So it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars for that.
So next we have our fire department.
Thank you. Submittals over the net, the previous five years since two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and sixteen, we had approximately four hundred and eighty plan review submittals. And this year, we're projected to have over nine hundred. The fire marshal and the deputy fire marshal spend approximately ninety-five percent of their time doing plan reviews. As a stopgap measure, we've taken one of our fire inspectors out of the field and have them working on some of our basic plan reviews, which of course has a negative impact on our fire inspection program. The problem we're realizing that the fire marshals are spending all of their time at this basically task level stuff, doing plan reviews, and they don't have time to do some of the other division head type tasks or management functions that we would require, going out and riding with staff, supervising the department, planning for the fire marshal's office for the future. One example, in our current strategic plan, we have a goal to, an objective to look at our current public education and outreach program and to expand that. That's something that's going to take considerable amount of time from the fire marshal, who just doesn't have the time right now because they're doing these plan reviews. We'd also like to update our website to better explain our permitting process and to help with frequently asked questions when we're dealing with plan reviews, plan submittals, and fire code questions and concerns. Ultimately, we want to offer a higher level of customer service to our business community. It seems right now, we're kind of operating with the squeaky meal, the squeaky wheel model. We get some complaints that come in through the mayor council's office. And then, of course, we act on those, but we can't proactively reach out to some of these businesses and developers to help walk them through the permitting process and the plan review process as opposed to just approving or denying the plan reviews. Adding the position would be a move toward the model that ComDev currently uses, where they have plan reviewers that are able to handle the majority of the applications. And then the chief building official, in our case, the fire marshal, only gets involved in the more complex fire and building plans. So the next request is the fire engine replacement. So this year, we have approval to replace engine twenty-six, which is a two thousand and seven Suffin fire engine. And we went through that process of designing that fire engine. They let us know that there's about an eighteen-month delay of when you order the vehicle to when it's delivered. So they're anticipating that we take receipt of that vehicle in May or June of two thousand and twenty-three. So in order to stay up to date on our replacement cycle, we want to go ahead and move engine twenty-two to this fiscal year from next fiscal year so we can get it replaced and stay in our current replacement cycle. If we get it ordered before January one, they will honor this year's pricing as well. The next one is the fire headquarters remodel project. So the purpose of this request is to reconfigure the fire department headquarters at Hembree Road to accommodate all of our full-time staff. So historically, for whatever reason, our full-time staff have been located at Hembree at fire headquarters, but also spread out to three different fire stations. Some work has already been done. We've, we've moved some stuff out of some copy, copy rooms and file rooms to try to bring some staff in. But more work needs to be done as well. From my perspective, there's a significant benefit and efficiency into having all of our staff under one roof so we can meet and, and get everyone on the same page as a team. The next request is an I-plans table. It's a workstation for the fire marshal's office again. And this is to mirror the setup that the fire marshal and the deputy fire marshal already have to do plan reviews. It comes with several different monitors so we can review plans on, on a, a big monitor or make notes or look up code references on, on other monitors. It also comes with the software needed to do plan reviews. We can use this if we get the plan reviewer position, but also if we continue to utilize the inspector to do some plan reviews. And then lastly, EMS utility terrain, utility terrain vehicle. We currently have a two thousand and eight John Deere UTV. It's fourteen years old. And the current vehicle that we have is one of those green ones that you used to see on the NFL fields to go and get the players. It doesn't have Nobby tires. It doesn't have something that you can go off-road. So what we're proposing is to get a newer model that can go on some of our trails, like Lita Thompson Park, the Big Creek Trail, and also use for our special events like Alive in Roswell on the Fourth of July. This will have a, it'll, number one, will be capable of carrying two firefighters. And it also has a utility bed in the back that can carry a patient either in a Stokes basket if we have to pull someone off the trail, or also on a long spineboard. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
So, so what are you, are you going to be selling the two thousand and eight model to recuperate part to invest in the thirty thousand or?
We, that is an option. I don't know if there are any other city departments like Parks that may want to make use of that if they don't need it to go off-road on trails or somewhere where they have to go, you know, something for life safety, where they have to count on it to get a patient out of a remote area.
Okay, so this might be related to other department, this asset to another department maybe? Okay, thanks.
Additional questions from council? Back to you, Mr. Luckett.
Next, we have our police department.
There we go. So the request for the police department, the first item is to reduce budgeted vacancy savings, two hundred thousand dollars. Every year, the finance department estimates savings based on vacant positions. And this is a good problem for me, is we, we did a good job of hiring people so we have fewer vacant positions than was anticipated by the finance department. So that two hundred thousand would be needed to fund those positions that are currently filled. Active shooter kits, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. This item would purchase, this is a life-saving item. This would purchase fifty kits that consist of a ballistic helmet, ballistic rifle-rated vest and carrier that officers would put on in the event of an active shooter or an incident where a suspect is armed with a rifle. Our current vest will not stop rifle rounds. And this is to provide that additional safety in, in the event of one of those circumstances. Did we want to stop for questions for operating or just go straight into capital? Okay, so for the capital request, the first item is the replacement of two of our automated license plate reader devices. These are the ALPRs which are on our patrol cars. They go out and run and record license plates of vehicles to look for wanted suspects, drivers with outstanding charges or warrants, Amber Alerts, or anybody who... drivers with outstanding charges or warrants, Amber Alerts, or anybody who has driving a wanted vehicle. Thermal imaging device replacement, this is to replace two of our four devices. These are handheld infrared devices that officers on the ground use in low-light situations to look for either suspects who have fled into wooded areas, or for missing persons who might be lost off a trail in one of our parks. And this is replacing two of our four. They're all reaching the end of their service life, and it costs more to repair them than to replace them. The next item is our bicycle patrol bike replacement, ten thousand dollars. This would be to replace two of our bikes with e-bikes. If you've been out to any of our events recently, Live in Roswell or any of our road races, you will have seen an increased visibility of our bike patrol unit. We currently have thirteen active bike patrol officers, and we have five that are going through the training now. So you'll see them more and more, and this is to replace two of those bikes with the e-bikes. And the last item is motorcycle replacement, which includes the trade-in of our current fleet. If you remember in our annual budget discussion, I talked about this item. Our motorcycles were not included in our fleet lease program. In our current motorcycles, we have eleven. There's twelve in our fleet. One has been totaled. So of the eleven, nine of them are seven years old, and the other two are four years old. So they are beyond their same life cycle as well, and this is a good opportunity to replace that fleet. And I will open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. The active shooter kit is replacement, or is an addition of what you already have on the?
So it's a little bit of both. We buy them as we have them, and they get damaged. Basically, they sit in the patrol cars. So the, the webbing for the helmets tends to degrade over time, and same with the, the vest plates. They're basically just a piece of steel, so they get bent being tossed around in the back of the patrol cars.
Okay. So it's mainly replacement?
So these are replacements, yes.
And the la, the, the service life will be on this estimated?
I mean, I, I would estimate probably five to seven years, but it, it's hard to say. It just depends. Some are taken care of more than others. Some are bounced around less than others, and just how much use they actually receive.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
The patrol bikes?
Yes.
As we all know, I've got a e-bike sitting in my office, and new it costs seventeen hundred dollars. There's a huge difference between seventeen hundred and five thousand. So what do we get in addition for an e-bike for our patrol?
So, so two things I failed to mention. This does also include the uniforms for those new bike riders, but also the, the police bikes are, are a higher rated bike. They're more durable. They can go over jumps, can go down steps without braking. I, I don't know how well-rated yours would be for going down steps.
Well, I think mine was well-rated, but I wasn't.
Yes. So it's just a little bit more durable. I know they're thicker, they're heavier, they have the, the bigger tires with the Nobby tires and the more sturdy wheels.
Okay.
And they're just rated for a little more off-road.
It seems like they're rated for a lot more, but over double the price.
So as, as you'll find, anything you purchase with the, with law enforcement attached to it, the price is automatically tripled, just because it's law enforcement rated.
Okay. Well, I could put a sticker on my bike and give it to you. Council, have any additional questions? Thank you, Chief. Mr. Luckett.
Next, we have our recreation and parks department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first item that we have on our operating request for this evening is ten thousand dollars for an increase for contract services for Riverside Sounds Concert Series. We currently have six concerts in that series. We average our budget about five thousand dollars per concert. What we're seeing right now in the marketplace is an increase in all of the services associated with provision, not only of concerts, but also for the talent, the equipment associated with the rental of all of our sound, lighting, and other production costs associated with providing that type of an event. And we start the concert series in the spring. So it starts in this fiscal year and then rolls through to next fiscal year as well. So it bridges two fiscal cycles. And in anticipation of those costs increasing, we're anticipating roughly about a twenty to twenty-two percent increase per concert, which is roughly about a thousand dollars or so associated with that program itself. As we look at our capital requests, these are the requests primarily that were brought forward from our, the initial first fiscal cycle and our fiscal year requests. The system-wide park improvements is all of our park benches, tables, barbecues, facilities and infrastructure within the parks themselves that people use, spread around our thousand acres. And we have a life cycle repair process that essentially the, the ones that are in the, the most disrepair get replaced so that we can continue to keep those assets fresh in our parks and facilities. Trail repairs are a number of different trails. This is all of our crush and run, some wood replacement at Big Creek, as well as some asphalt repair that needs to be done down along the river, as well as East Roswell Park. And we've got some work that we want to do also at Hembree Park and some of our more degraded and eroded areas of our trail system. We continue on our light pole replacement program. We have seven poles remaining at East Roswell Park to finish off that park, and then we can move on to the next of our wooden pole replacement program. And this finishes off the, the seven poles that we have at East Roswell Park as part of that process. We continue to experience some issues with the Adult Aquatic Center pool deck, and this is the replacement and repair of the pool deck itself. We're experiencing some, some very slippery conditions on the indoor section of that pool deck, and so we're looking at a completely new product to essentially overlay on the top of the concrete to create a safe walking condition on the inside of that space. It doesn't drain well currently, and this helps us to work on the drainage so that the water will actually drain into the drains as it was designed, and then minimize some of the slip and fall issues that we're concerned with on the pool deck as people move in and around that facility. Our historic house property maintenance is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This is all four of the historic home properties, but a focus in on Mimosa Hall with some of the exterior work that we need to do there, Barrington with some deck replacement, as well as some roof work that we need to do, and some grading on a couple of the walking paths that are currently draining onto different areas, causing some ponding and some puddling and some erosion issues on the corners of the property that currently need to be handled and redirected in a significant way back onto the property so that we don't continue to experience some of the erosion. Our small equipment replacement program is all of our small light-duty vehicles and lawn mowers, as well as the utility vehicles that are in and around all of our facilities. They run about a five to seven-year useful life, and we do about five, or fifty thousand dollars of replacement on that equipment on an annualized basis. And so the ones that go beyond their, their useful life and can't be repaired anymore, we'll pull them out of service. We'll part them if we can, using them on other pieces of equipment, and then purchase new equipment to continue that life cycle of our small equipment. The large equipment, in this case, is a skid steer, as well as a dump truck to support that skid steer and trailer. We've run the useful life, the original skid steer that we're looking at replacing right now, I think was nineteen ninety-nine. It's got a significant amount of hours on that piece of equipment, and it's gotten to the point where it costs us more money to repair it, and the downtime really doesn't allow us to leverage that piece of equipment in a really meaningful way. And so then we're stuck renting equipment, and our rental budget is being taxed on the rental side of that equipment. It's a piece of equipment that we use nearly every day when it's operational. We looked at the kind of life cycle cost of whether or not we should just lease something of similar size when we need it. The reality is from staff is, is this is something that we're out using on all of our trails, all of our systems to repair and replace, essentially moving earth and dirt around in a lot of our trail repair projects that we're doing. The tennis court rebuild, we've talked off and on about it. These are two tennis courts, number eleven and number twelve in Roswell Area Park, that need to be completely rebuilt. We have in our three eighty-five plan, this council's already funded, resurfacing projects in a couple of courts. This is really tearing the, the court down and building it from the ground up. Eventually, we run a, a useful life cycle on the understory of those courts that need to be completely replaced. They can run about ten to fifteen years on a, on a good year. Sometimes we'll get twenty years out of them. And Courts eleven and twelve, they're kind of at the bottom of the projects, or bottom of the property, so we experience a lot of erosion on the corners of the property, and that's a, a piece that we need to shore up as part of the rebuild to minimize the erosion issues around those courts, and hopefully get a longer useful life out of them in the future. And then we have a playground replacement at Riverside Park that we would like to do as part of our cyclical replacement of those park infrastructure pieces. This is just one playground replacement. It's one of our larger playgrounds. We would replace that consistent with the River Park Master Plan in the vision of more naturalistic style play equipment down there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Leatherman. I just have a question about this Adult Aquatic Center. You refer to the interior deck.
Correct.
Which is the exterior deck?
So the, the aquatic center, if you walk out, or if you're walking from the parking lot, the building is actually connected to the breezeway that's covered by the building. So if you're staring at the Adult Aquatic Center, the approach walkway is actually one seamless slab, but you have the building edge that separates the interior from the exterior. So you have a sidewalk essentially along the glass wall where you can look into the aquatic center. That's the exterior decking. The interior decking is essentially everything inside of the pool area, but the way that the building was designed, and it's just, I didn't even realize I said it, is it's actually all one deck. And so as we're looking at it, the way that those seams match one another, it's actually underneath the glass. But, so you have an interior and exterior deck, but this is the inside of the building.
Okay, thank you. And, and one follow-up question. When you replace the pa, the playground equipment, what happens with the old playground equipment?
Usually, by the time we're done with it, it's truly run its useful life. And the steel, the, the steel of the support beams are usually rusted out from the center, and so they're not reusable. They'll be recycled. The plastic has run its useful life, and it's degraded to the point where you can't reuse it in any way. That's recycled if it can be, but generally that plastic is not able to be recycled.
So it's not able to be donated to any other causes?
No, because the way that you have to dismantle it, most of the time, you're having to cut it out and demo it completely. Yeah.
Additional comments? Councilmember Zapata?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, quick question. The phase two and phase three on East Roswell Park, the Dog Park, is this fun already?
It is not.
It's not. And it's not requested here on a mid-year budget?
Correct. We consider that a new project as opposed to maintenance of an existing facility. Because of the nature of that project, it's not replacing the existing equipment that's out there, such as the fence line and the, the tables and benches. That requires really a complete rebuild of that facility.
Additional comments, questions from council? Back to you, Mr. Luckett.
Next, we have our transportation department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We just have two items here. One is an asphalt compactor roller. This is a replacement of an existing piece of equipment that has outlasted its useful life. It also needs to be upgraded so that we can complete small patch and repair work and minor repairs on asphalt quickly without having to bring in a contractor or rental equipment. Right now, we can't do that with our current piece of equipment. The second one is to fund the speed management and pedestrian safety program. This is an item that we have had in the past. It was not funded this past year, and it will fund what I would call facilities that reduce speeds or promote pedestrian or bicycle safety in neighborhoods. So for example, some of those beacons with the flashing lights at crosswalks, that's an example of what would be funded under this program if it's funded. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a question. The, the speed management pedestrian safety program, are those dollars already allocated, or is that just setting aside? I mean, do you have projects as those would be assigned for, or is that just an opportunity or, you know, budget, opportunity budget?
So we have several requests for those that have come in. I believe we funded one last year out of this program. I think it was last year. It may have been two years ago in Haley's Pond. We have one pending right now. Actually, we're going to bring that to committee in November, I believe, which has been requested up at the orchards. Those are the two things. We were going to bring that as a budget amendment. If this were funded, it would be the type of activity that could be funded. We've also funded some medians in places where there are crosswalks where we don't have those.
Additional questions? Councilmember Flairman?
Thank you, Ms. Skalski. Feels strange asking a transportation question, but I, I've got one that might sound off-topic, but I think it's, it's related because it would potentially add to or adjust regarding the mid-year. So now that voters have approved TSPLOS II, what I'm wondering is, do we, do we feel we're in a spot to, to kind of really make sure that we're, we're making progress and hitting the ground running? Or are there, are there certain expenditures that would, that would better set us up for success to ensure that the projects are ready to start moving fast? Does that make sense to my question?
I think so, although it is a little odd for me to be answering transportation.
Yes.
Point is taken. So I think we're in a good position to follow up and get mobilized for TSPLOS II, given the vote. We do have some items that were on their way towards committee that I specifically held until after the vote, so that we expect we will bring you at least some of that in potentially December. And there's been quite a bit of planning just in mobilizing for the vote that has helped us organize for that. So at this point, I think we're fine through the holidays, and we have plenty of activities prior to having, let's say, funding coming in beginning in April or so.
Excellent. Thank you. I just want to make sure if, if at any time, it feels like we're not making the progress we should, or certain resources or assistance from Mayor and Council, could, whether resources, whatever, whatever it might be, would help, I want to make sure that just the hand is being raised and we're being alerted, because I do want to make sure we're able to, to hit the ground running fast with that.
We will raise our hand.
Thank you.
Additional comments from council? Back to you, Mr. Luckett.
Thank you. The last slide represents citywide requests, just two items to report here. One is actually a savings. The city recompeted our copier and printer contracts and realized a savings from that. So for this particular year, there's a savings of thirty-eight thousand dollars, and we want to recognize that. And the recurring savings is about twenty-five thousand dollars on, in future years. On the capital side, I mentioned this earlier, you all previously had approved the public safety laptop replacement that affects both police and fire. And this is just like, as I mentioned, the accounting adjustment to recognize the lease proceeds and the expense associated with that. So it's a net zero impact to the city. The annual debt service for that financing is included in the approved budget. So with that, we'll move on to the next steps. We're here this evening to really to get guidance from the mayor and council on the items in the mid-year budget amendment, and any feedback you might have. Based on that, we could bring this item to the November twenty-ninth mayor and council meeting to be considered for approval. So that wraps up our presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any further questions that you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ryan, there will be any other funds, because, you know, I was talking about the phase two and phase three on East Roswell Park, the Dog Park. We completed phase one a while ago, and it's taking some time to complete two and three. Is any way to include this in here, or, or you already balance this no one penny left after all these department requests?
So going back to the slide that we talked about earlier with the general fund summary, it's really a decision of mayor and council. You can see here at the bottom, you know, we are recommending, we have about two-point-one million dollars remaining fund balance in the general fund. You know, kind of what I talked about earlier was we wanted to make sure we were also preparing for what we know is coming in FY two thousand and twenty-three. And we also wanted to make sure that we are considering any new requests with, in the broad picture of all the requests that are out there, so they can be fully evaluated against each other. All that being said, yes, there are funds. Our recommendation was to set that aside for two thousand and twenty-three, but yes, there are funds available if mayor and council wanted to add other projects current today.
Additional, yes, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, at, at a high level, can you just recap as far as?
Um Ryan, at at a high level, can um you just recap as far as the, after we had passed the budget, we had additional funds uh from the CARES Act? So we had one round of roughly four million and that was prior year, is that correct? That was uh FY twenty?
Correct, FY twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, FY twenty-one. Um all those, the four million was spent there.
Correct.
And then we got an additional twelve million from the ARPA, the ARPA funds, which half of that is going to be in FY twenty-two and the other half in FY twenty-three?
Right, we've received half of it. Uh we received that back in June, um May-June, and we'll receive the second half uh twelve months from that point.
So so we'll have about six million and then now we have as far as leftover from last year, four and a half million, is that correct?
Correct.
And the two-point-one-six-four, you are left that as a reserve. In previous years, did you leave um funds for reserve from the carryover from prior years?
I don't know that we've been as specific as calling it out as a line as reserve. It's just been remaining funds and that have been used as part of the budget process, the upcoming budget process. Um we've tried to point out each year that, you know, these are funds that we have remaining from the prior year. Um anything that we spend today will mean less funding for capital projects that come about in the the upcoming budget process.
And so the reason for leaving the two-point-one-six-four was because you anticipate the FY twenty-three budget's going to be tight?
I would say, well, we wouldn't use fund balance to cover operating expenses, um so I'm not saying that we would use it for that purpose. Um but just knowing that there are a lot of needs um coming, whether it be, you know, capital needs, unfunded capital that we've talked about with the Capital Improvement Program, um whether that be any one-time expenses associated with the strategic plan, um just trying to position ourselves to be in a good spot when we start sorting through the next budget year.
And the reason I ask is because we we have the six million still, so I was just curious why we were leaving the two million when we had so much other funding that would potentially be available.
Yeah, um and I would say that um another reason for that is because the focus, at least from a staff perspective, the focus was, you know, trying to allocate enough money to address all of the maintenance needs that exist for this fiscal year, um not really devoting new money to new projects at this point. And saving that opportunity when you all can view all capital project needs that exist at once and make that decision as part of the annual budget process. That was the thinking from staff.
And just one last question. So for the East Roswell Dog Park, phase two and phase three, what is the total of that?
Not sure. Sorry, pulling my notes from my email. So the phase two and phase three total is five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-one-hundred dollars is our estimate at a staff level right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you. Um is that project something that would be eligible for ARPA funding?
I would defer to Ryan on that question. It's new construction of an existing facility um improvements. It would be.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. So, Mr. Luckett, you said something to coun- you answered Councilmember Hall with my exact uh hes- hesitation from from today, which is, so first of all, I think you did a very thorough and helpful job with the presentation and uh and and every single, every single request on there is certainly legitimate and justified. The iss- the issue I have is it's certainly not all the the needs of the city. And the the issue I have is we're just seeing this this list that that's that's been, you know, produced and and put and put together without without really having full visibility into all the full unfunded aspects and different needs. You know, I know, I know there was a long list um from a from a separate presentation of of other, you know, uh additional needs from from Wreckin' Park. I'm sure there's many from from all the departments. And and I I know we actually had this debate and disagreement last year during the mid-year, which was, which was really, there should be the opportunity to really fully understand that that bigger picture, make sure we're not, we're not making a decision in a vacuum and that uh and that we have the opportunity for adds and deletes to make sure that we are, you know, most effectively spending this tax money for uh for taxpayers. So so what I'd really prefer to see is is a little more time spent on the full picture and not just a consolidated list that, you know, works out from a number standpoint because I'm I'm just concerned that, you know, uh we always have to make tough decisions, we always have to prioritize and that is something that we should be doing as a as a mayor and council and in public. So so that's what I'd prefer to see happen at a uh at at an upcoming committee meeting before uh before the final list is is voted on and and spent.
But I think for us to be able to put that list together, I think we would need a better understanding of what you mean by um the full list because I think from a staff perspective, uh we're providing the full list of immediate needs that we have for the fiscal year. So I think maybe we might need a little more guidance on what your list would, or what the list would include or what you mean by that.
Sure. So what I mean by that is, so it's it's uh it's um it's November right now and and basically in, at what time does the, at what point does the annual budget process start? Is that March where January? So basically, that's that's when departments are coming, coming up with really their their wish list and all those different aspects. And and it's my my prediction that these would not be brand-new requests, a lot of them in January, I'm sure some some would be, but some would be things that the departments have wanted or needed for a while or taxpayers have needed for a while. And so basically, knowing, knowing that, I'd prefer to have a bigger picture of what are the, by choosing these expenses, what are the things that we're foregoing um that that the departments have been requesting? You know, even another example of that is is unfunded requests from from this fiscal year. I I believe there's still some that are unfunded, right? Yeah. And so that's, that's basically what I mean as a as a comparison, under understanding what were all those unfunded items that that did not get approved this budget that are also not even being considered or discussed during this mid-year. So that's something I'd I'd love to see at a committee.
Additional questions from council? Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Not seeing anyone approach? Yes, please come forward.
I'm Karen Parrish and you guys, most of you know me, Board Chair of the Roswell Housing Authority. I just wanted to come today to talk about a a project that's going, that's happening currently down uh Grove Place, which is a cul-de-sac at the Housing Authority where we have twenty-three units. The uh several months ago, the Housing Authority voted to uh spend the money to about twenty-five thousand dollars to buy um meters that go for each unit that we have on the street. However, there's uh, we've recently figured out we have a different cost uh of connecting those meters to our units is going to be unusually high for us, which is about fifty thousand dollars. And uh that's to take the lines around the back part of the property because our li- our properties are on slabs and we can't connect them to the front of the building in a retrofit. We've also got some uh, the reason that we're we're wanting to go ahead and complete that during this timeframe instead of wait is there's a quite a bit of cost savings doing it while they're bringing the water lines down the street as well as a a liability or insurance uh policy for us because some of those water lines that service our residents down there uh go underneath the road itself. And if uh we develop a leak under there, we would have to pay for putting the road back together, which is quite expensive. Uh last year alone, we spent over thirty thousand dollars on water leaks at the Housing Authority. And so we're trying to prevent that with this new line coming down the street and we were just wondering if some of those, I know that you haven't determined yet where the ARPA funds go, but we would like to be first in line to 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 potentially maybe put our name in the hat for fifty K to reimburse some of those lines that we're having to redo right now because the city is bringing the new line down the street using uh CDBG grant funds this year. So um it, just in light of that, I just wanted to speak for two minutes to throw our name in. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Luckett, if you can clarify for me, um the discussion tonight is not around the ARPA funds, the discussion tonight is around the mid-year budget, correct? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata. What, if you would hold for one second, is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak? Thank you. Now I'll bring it back to council.
Thank you, Mayor. So um, yeah, you know, I know about this project. I think that um it's a very legitimate request. We're talking about water, we're talking about people in the low-income bracket. So eh if it's not the ARPA, could be also another source of revenue to help them out to complete the project eh for the water line? Or only ARPA is the only option that we have to help them out if this mayor and council decide to help?
I mean, I think that um the fund balance that we have in the city is is another eligible use for that purpose.
Also, CDBG money is an eligible eligible use.
So it could be?
So it could be ARPA, CDBG.
So it's something that maybe could be included for committee meeting for eh public works, this item, and we have more discussion on that? Is it possible?
That's not really my. I'll leave that to Mr. Skalski.
I do have one other comment. It's going on right now, the prog- the the process down the street is going on and probably for the next couple of months. So I don't know which funds could be available either immediately or retroactive or or what we're going to have to spend on that.
Thank you. Mr. Skalski.
So just from a precedent and sort of a funding status, I think the concern that the water utility would have is just that we typically do not fund the private service lines on any of our um installed water lines. So there may be funding choices available uh to the city and we'd be happy to bring that forward, but we did view this as the customer's initiative to bring forward. And the funding sources, again, I would defer to some of the regulations on what can be funded with which funds. Um CDBG funds typically do not include the service lines as part of those projects. I'm not sure if, given the uh the function here, that they may not be eligible for some. It's just we've never included that in any historic CDBG projects. And typically, the ratepayers in the Water Utility Fund would not be bearing that cost under any circumstances that I've seen so far. That's, I'd be happy to bring it forward, though.
Thank you.
Please. Yeah, maybe, you know, general fund because we've been financing flowers on Canton Street for like fifteen thousand dollars or so. And for me, you know, no, this is a nonprofit with, you know, taking care of the low-income people living on this uh um unit and it's water. I mean, it's water, water. So what else you need other than water, air and food? So um I really want to include this for um see what what kind of funds we can allocate to that. Like I said, we we have so many different eh for good causes, many different nonprofit organizations in the city of Roswell. And I see this uh organization, the Roswell Housing Authority, doing a good job for people of low income who needs uh some extra help. So I really want to include this uh and I I'm I'm saying the public works because it's water, but you know, could be any other department uh that, you know, you think is better to to initiate this discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Zapata. We've heard your opinion. Any other comments from council? Not seeing any hands up? We are adjourned. Thank you.